All right. All right, everyone. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Tantramar Council Committee of the Whole meeting for Monday, April 22, 2024. I'd like to acknowledge we are located within the territory of the Mi'kmaq'i, the unceded ancestral territory of the Mi'kmaq'i people. I also would like to say that Counselor Butcher and Counselor Esther Brooks have sent their regrets they won't be at the meeting this evening. 1.1 on the agenda, approval of the agenda. If a counselor could read that, that'd be great. Deputy Mayor Martin, go ahead.
I move that council approve the agenda of Committee of the Whole meeting of April 22, 2024 as circulated.
Move by Deputy Mayor Martin, seconded by Counselor Finney. Any questions on the motion? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. 1.2 Conflict of Interest Declaration. Is there any conflict of interest declaration from council or staff on the agenda that presented today? Seeing none, move on. 2.1 Plan 360 Text Amendment to Dorchester Zoning Bylaw. And Ms. Pickford.
Okay. Thank you, your worship, members of council. So in your package, you will see a preliminary report for the proposed text amendment. I draw that just so that if I reference back to the map that's on there, you'll know what I'm referring to. So in this particular case, we've received an application from DCS Kids Daycare, and they're proposing to add daycare facilities to the Village Core Zone under the Dorchester zoning bylaw. In the Village Core Zone, which is the one identified as blue on the attached map in the report, is the most permissive zone within the Dorchester zoning bylaw, and it provides for a variety of uses, including retail, service shops, service stations, and institutional uses. But it specifically lists what institutional uses they consider. So for instance, government buildings, educational uses, and places of assembly are listed within those permitted uses. But when you go into the Dorchester zoning bylaw, the only place where it actually lists daycare facilities is in the institutional zone. So because it's listed somewhere within the bylaw already, we have to go with the assumption that it was intentionally done that way so that daycares would only be permitted within that one institutional zone. So their application is actually proposing to add that to the zone to allow it within that Village Core area. Currently, I did want to point out that they are operating within the Village Core Zone under a temporary use application. So this is a permit that allows them to operate for up to one year, and at the end of the year, if the bylaw should not be changed, then they would be required to remove the daycare from that location. Their expiration would be on September of 2024. So what you'll see at the regular council meeting is a motion will come forward in the form of resolution, and council can either choose to consider the resolution for the proposed text amendment to add it to the Village Core Zone, and at which time that would set a date for a public hearing, direct staff to draft a proposed bylaw that would add that as a permitted use, and then it will seek the views of the Planning, Review, and Adjustment Committee as well. So fulfilling the requirements of the Community Planning Act. But if council chooses that they don't want to consider this text amendment, then they can deny that particular resolution. That's it.
Thank you, Ms. Pickford. And just for process, so if council is willing, then that would start the process, there'd be the public engagement, and then after that, it would then come, sorry, PRAC, and then it would come back to council where there'd be three readings to amend the zoning bylaws. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. All right. Any questions or comments from council on this one? Can't see, just checking to see if I see any lights, but, no. Okay. Thank you very much. The next one is yours as well.
Do you have a motion?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Yes, the motion. So if somebody would be willing to read that motion, Counselor Wiggins-Collwell, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor Black. I move that council direct item 2.1 text amendment to the Dorchester zoning bylaw to be sent to the regular council meeting of May 14, 2024 for consideration.
Move by Counselor Wiggins-Collwell, seconded by Counselor Finney. Call for the question.
Question.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. 2.2 Plan 360 Removal of Development Agreement in Highway Commercial Zone. Again, Ms. Pickford, go ahead.
Thank you, your worship, members of council. So this particular application is a similar kind of process to the last one, but there are some slight differences between it. So to start with, the owner of the Pizza Delight Building has proposed request to remove the development agreement on that property. In this particular case, that development agreement was a combined development agreement with Pizza, oh, sorry, with Home Hardware at the same time. So Home Hardware has also confirmed that they agree with the request to remove the development agreement from both of those properties. Under the highway commercial zoning, the exit 504 was the first area that was zoned highway commercial within the town of Sackville zoning bylaw, and that was done in 1994. And originally, any development that was done in that highway commercial area was required to enter into a development agreement with the town, as well as the particular developers proposing to develop within that area. So Pizza Delight and Home Hardware between the years of 2023 and 2024, I get into a little bit of detail into that staff report as to some changes that were made back and forth. But within that timeframe, they entered into the one agreement that covered both businesses. And within those, the development agreement included things such as the appearance of the building, signage requirements, as well as specified specifically the uses themselves for the buildings. Around 2008 and 2009, council had agreed to remove the requirement from the highway commercial area for development agreements to be entered into. However, that only applied to new development that was being proposed in the highway commercial area, and any existing development agreements that were in place would remain in place until such time as they were revoked or removed. Home Hardware and Pizza Delight have been developed for approximately 20 years now. You'll notice that the Pizza Delight Building remains vacant at this time. However, under the agreement, the only use that would be permitted within that building would be a single restaurant. So no other uses that are listed within the highway commercial zone could be entertained in that particular building unless, of course, the agreement came before council, went through a public hearing process to amend that particular agreement for the new use. However, because these buildings have been in place for so long, we've removed that requirement as well for new development, the applicant is requesting to just remove the agreement from the two properties because they're seeing more now as a hindrance to the development in that particular area. Of course, I do want to say if council does choose to remove the agreement, any new development or any change of use that would occur on the particular, either one of those properties, would still be required to meet all requirements of the zoning bylaw under the highway commercial zone. So only the permitted uses within that section of the zoning bylaw would be permitted, and of course, they would have to meet, for a change of use, they would have to meet any parking requirements or any other stipulations within that zone. So again, council will have to go through a particular process if they want to consider amending this. So we would propose to submit a resolution during the May council meeting, which would set the process in motion. Very similar, we would be required to enter into a public hearing process where it gets advertised that council is looking at considering removing the agreement from these two particular properties, as well as, or sorry, at the end of that, if council chose to do it, they could just do a simple resolution to remove the agreement, which gets registered in the registry office, removing the agreements from the property. We are not required under that process because there's no bylaw being considered. We're keeping the zone as is. So there would be no requirement to seek the planning, review, and adjustment committees, nor do three readings. So it's just a simple resolution. Of course, if council does not wish to remove the development agreement from their property, they could refuse to entertain the resolution that's presented at the next council meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Pickford. Any questions from council? Counselor Goghan, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor Black. Just to be clear, these are only affecting these two PIDs, correct? Not like any other, there's no other weird stuff for like McDonald's or Tim Hortons and stuff like that?
Ms. Pickford? Yep, go ahead.
We would actually only be removing these particular registered agreements. So there is two that I've identified in here. One was for a sign for Pizza Delight, which does not meet, is less than the required standards of today, as well as the main one that controls the buildings themselves.
Counselor Finney.
Ms. Pickford, could you tell me what kind of developments could go in there if we remove this now?
Like for instance, what would the Pizza Delight be, what could it be used for? Other than just a restaurant?
So of course, it could be used as a restaurant, but it could also be used as a automotive sales agency or related activities, any retail or service shop, places of amusement or assembly, convenience store, daycare center, and also tourist accommodations as well. But before they could, they could not just start to do that activity, they would have to apply for a permit to actually come in and change the particular use of the building, at which time we would go through the bylaw and confirm that it met all standards.
Counselor Finney.
So in other words, actually, by removing this, we're putting everybody on the same level, that even with the new development coming in.
That's correct.
Can they, can, could that restaurant be converted into an apartment building?
No. We do not allow, the only residential that appears in that bylaw or in that permitted use section is existing residential. So that's meant to not take away rights from any house that might have been already located in the highway commercial zone, but no new residential dwelling units would be permitted, and that's all.
Thank you very much.
Any further questions or comments from council? Okay. Thank you, Ms. Pickford. There is a motion for 2.2. If somebody could read that. Counselor Tower, go ahead.
I move that council direct item 2.2 Removal of the Development Agreement in Highway Commercial Zone be sent to the regular council meeting of May 14, 2024 for consideration.
Move by Counselor Tower, seconded by Deputy Mayor Martin. Any last comments or questions? Call for the question.
Question.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. 2.3 Strategic Planning Services RFP. Ms. Miller.
Good afternoon, mayor and council. This report can be found on page seven of your package. The new entity of Tantramar was created on January 1, 2023. As a new municipality, we have a new name, new boundary, new council, new community, and we need a plan to help us prioritize our goals over the next five years and beyond. The strategic plan is the first in a series of plans that need to be created for Tantramar. Staff issued an RFP on March 13 for Strategic Planning Services with a budget of $50,000. Seventeen RFP documents were picked up and eight submissions were received at the RFP opening on April 3. Staff evaluated proposals based on budget, qualifications, and expertise, proposal, deliverable schedule, sample projects, and added value. A committee of three staff members reviewed the proposals, and a summary of the average scores is provided in the report. Staff recommends that council award RFP 10-2024-05 Strategic Planning Services to Strategic Steps Inc. in the amount of $42,100, HST included. And a motion will be forwarded at the regular council meeting on May 14, 2024. That is my report. I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. Any questions from council on item 2.3? I, I'll start maybe, okay, Counselor Tower, you. I was just going to say that this is incredibly exciting. I'm glad that this is happening, just to set the tone for what our municipality will be looking at for the next five years. Also, the comprehensive public consultation process is included as part of the request for the RFP, I think is vitally important, considering our new boundaries. So I'm really happy to see that as well. I did have a question. I mean, I, you know, at this point, I agree with what staff is recommending, but was there any consideration, was there any consideration in the matrix for companies that may have worked with our former municipalities in the past? I know we're the municipality of Tantramar, but for the village of Dorchester or the town of Sackville, was there any consideration for work that was done by any of these companies in the past?
Thank you for the question. So the matrix looked at the expertise and qualifications of the different consultants that submitted. We did not look specifically at previous experience with our specific municipalities that create Tantramar, but we were looking at municipal experience.
Okay. Thank you. Counselor Tower?
You asked most of what I wanted to ask, anyway.
See, I should have went with you first. I apologize.
Yeah, no, you did it better than I would have, for sure. I also think it's exciting, too, that where is this company located?
Ms. Miller?
Thank you for the question. So they're a national company, but the proposal came in from their Atlantic Canada offices. So the lead consultant is based out of St. John's Newfoundland.
Counselor Tower?
Okay, yeah, just a simple follow-up. And under the climate change lens, I was just wondering, the distance that someone has to travel, was it thought into the lens when you, not that it should be turning those people down because of it, but did that go into thought pattern?
Ms. Miller?
The short answer is no, it did not.
Any last questions, comments, discussion? Okay. So a motion for 2.3. Counselor Hicks.
Thank you, Mayor Black. I move that council direct item 2.3 Strategic Planning Services RFP be sent to the regular council meeting on May 14, 2024 for consideration.
Move by Counselor Hicks, seconded by Counselor Goghan. Final questions, comments? No? Call for the question.
Last question.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. 2.4 35 Main Street-Sackville Shared Access Agreement. Ms. Miller again.
Hello again. This report can be found on page 10 of your council package. The property at 35 Main Street next to Tantramar Municipal Office is being developed as a dental clinic. Tantramar staff have been in contact with the property owner and are proposing to create a shared entrance that would align with Charlotte Street. So when I say shared entrance, I mean to their parking area and to our parking area at the front of the building on Main Street. The proposal before you today would create a shared access agreement between 31 Main Street and 35 Main Street for the entrance, and to create an easement for an existing storm lateral. The shared access agreement outlines responsibilities for both parties for maintenance, ice and snow control, liability insurance, and eventual replacement or repair of the shared portion of the driveway. The easement is for an underground storm lateral across 31 Main Street property, and it indicates the ownership and repair of the lateral is 35 Main Street's responsibility, but requires the property owner to provide notice, minimize disruption, and maintain access during any work. Staff recommends that council approve a shared access agreement and easement with 35 Main Street, and authorize the mayor and clerk to sign and seal any necessary documents. A motion will be forwarded to the regular council meeting of May 14, and that is my report. I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. Counselor Finney, go ahead.
Ms. Miller, could you please tell me what is a lateral? I think that's an engineering question, but can you explain it to me? I'm not an engineer, so.
Ms. Miller, do you want to try to take that?
Nope. I would love to defer that to my colleague in.
Mr. Epple.
It's the same as a service. We sometimes refer to it as a service lateral. So it is the storm pipe, in this case, that is picking up the catch basins in the parking lot and the rainwater leaders potentially off the building.
So that's one that has to be there? Put in place? Or is something already there?
Mr. Epple?
They have constructed their storm pipe, and it is physically on 31 Main Street's property now, and it's to grant them the easement. This was discussed between engineering and the developer, that they had no choice because of the alignment of the pipe and the grades in order to get to the main. So we understood when they were developing the site that they'd have to do this.
Counselor Hicks?
Thank you, Mayor Black. I'm just wondering what the advantage is to tying the municipal parking lot in with private driveway and putting more traffic through the parking where people are trying to park here, that's all.
Ms. Miller?
Thank you, mayor. So I can start, and then if I miss anything, perhaps Mr. Epple can jump in. So by combining and sharing an access, we're having, we're reducing the number of driveways on Main Street. So that would reduce the number of potential clinics. There'd be one driveway instead of two. We would improve the sidewalk and make sure that there's more emphasis on the pedestrian traffic and not vehicle traffic. And we would also take the opportunity to align the access, which is currently offset. We would be aligning it with Charlotte Street, so we'd have that aligned four-way intersection, which we don't currently have. And then maybe if there's anything Mr. Epple wanted to add.
Anything to add, Mr. Epple?
From a road safety point of view, having fewer driveways and making it more predictable for drivers on the road is a safer setup for us. And so at this location where we've got a vertical grade and a horizontal curve, and visibility is a bit challenged to the crosswalk on Main Street at Charlotte Street, this is, to simplify, the load on drivers is a good thing. We'll also be installing rectangular rapid flashing beacons, which was planned to go, and we've just been waiting for them to get far enough with their development to further enhance and improve the safety of that crosswalk at that location. So consolidating the driveways is a very positive thing. It's something that the municipality was pushing for.
Counselor Goghan.
Thank you, Mayor Black. So just to put it in perspective here, we would be blocking off our driveway, and then all the traffic would be going out of the clinic's driveway?
Ms. Miller?
Thank you, mayor. Yes, that's correct.
Counselor Finney.
I forgot what I was going to ask. No, I do remember. Thank you. Mr. Epple, question to you is, you mentioned this crosswalk lights and stuff. There's going to be crosswalk lights put there, as a matter of fact, when?
Mr. Epple?
We're getting the pricing for the actual installation. We already have the signs and poles. It's just a matter of getting the pricing for the installation, making sure it's within budget, and if it is, then it would happen in the next couple of months.
Because I mentioned it. As we talked after the last council meeting about the one that's not working right now. There's no light bulbs in that at all, which is very unsafe. So, thank you.
Any last questions, comments, before we go to the motion? Okay. Thank you, Ms. Miller and Mr. Epple. So I, that's motion 20, 2.4, sorry. Somebody could read that. Deputy Mayor Martin, go ahead.
I move that council direct item 2.4 35 Main Street-Sackville Shared Access Agreement be sent to the regular council meeting of May 14, 2024 for consideration.
Move by Deputy Mayor Martin, seconded by Counselor Hicks. Call for the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. 2.5 Tender Number TAN 2024-06 Asphalt Patching. Mr. Epple?
Thank you, your worship. The annual patching tender was issued on March 28 and closed on April 16. There were seven tenders taken out. We received three submissions. The lowest-priced tender is Dexter Construction, and their price is both within budget and in order. The budget for this project is $310,000. We are proposing to make the award, although their price is $308,380, we're proposing to award it to them for $308,000 because we want to hold back $2,000 for material testing services to make sure that the quality is there. So we would, it's a uniprice contract, and so the quantities would be adjusted ever so slightly. So staff is recommending that council consider awarding the contract to the lowest tender, Dexter Construction, in the amount of $308,000. That's my report, your worship.
Thank you, Mr. Epple. Questions or comments on item 2.5? Counselor Goghan.
Thank you, Mayor Black. I'm pretty sure they're the ones that did it last year, correct? Okay. And my other question is, this kind of threw me off the material consultant input, so we would just get somebody to make sure that their mix is correct and all that stuff, or?
Mr. Epple?
So yes, we would get the gradation on their gravels, check their asphalt cement. We could also do a test for what is the optimal compaction on their asphalt material, and if we chose to, we could also do some in-place testing of the compaction that they achieve.
Okay. All right, so motion for 2.5. Counselor Wiggins-Collwell?
Thank you, Mayor Black. I move that council direct item 2.5 Tender Number TAN 2024-06 for consideration.
Move by Counselor Wiggins-Collwell, seconded by Counselor Finney, I believe. Call for the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. 2.6 Middle Sackville Lift Station Panel Replacement. Mr. Epple?
Thank you, your worship. So this item cropped up because the lift station, which is from 1978 and has all original equipment in it, there was a small issue back in, I think it was January of this year, where we had the power go out of phase on us. Still had power, but it wasn't working properly. We lost one of the pumps and had to come and re-prime it. In the meantime, during one of our weekly checks, we came and discovered because of the notifications that we get from the system, or the lack thereof in this case, we just, during a routine check, went and checked and found that one of the pumps was still running, but it had lost prime, which meant it was no longer pumping water, and so all it was doing was heating up. And so the place was like a steam bath because of the heat generated by this. So we turned off the pump. We've determined that the pump's okay, but we do need to upgrade the panel. We're told that we cannot get parts for this panel anymore, and so the cost to replace the panel is not cheap. It's $26,875.50, including HST, but that also allows us to add SCADA at this location, which allows us to have more control of that station and receive more notifications about what's happening with it. So this incident that happened this past winter, we would have gotten an alarm for that, and we could have responded right away. Had that gone another couple of days, we may have lost the pump as well, which would have been another $30,000 or $40,000 bill, and potentially an issue with the pump lift station not operating. So the recommendation is for council to consider approving Raytech Electrical Systems to replace the middle Sackville lift station control panel at a cost of $26,875.50, including HST. Be happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Epple. Any- Any questions on item two point six? Okay. So a motion for, for that one. Counselor Hicks, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor Black. I move that council direct item two point six, Middle Sackville Lift Station Panel Replacement be sent to the regular council meeting on May fourteenth, twenty twenty-four for consideration.
Moved by Counselor Hicks, seconded by, geez, so many hands. Counselor Tower. Call for the question? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Two point seven, surplus equipment, two thousand and one Ford E four fifty van with ambulance body. Mr. Epple again.
Thank you, your worship. This is a bit of housekeeping. The Dorchester Fire Rescue Vehicle, which is what this is, went in for service and an inspection back in January. It went out to Haylock Contract and Repair Service, and they advised that there was a page and a half of repairs required to it. And in looking at the extensive use of that vehicle, it's got two hundred and sixty-two thousand kilometers on it, it's a two thousand and one, and the extent of repairs, it was determined, along with the unknowns about the bodywork and the life of the repairs, that it would be best to take it out of service since we really do need a very safe and reliable vehicle for first responders to use. So that vehicle is taken out of service back in January, and this is just to seek council's approval in order for us to dispose of that vehicle, whether it be by auction or by sale. So staff is recommending that council consider declaring the two thousand and one Ford E four fifty with ambulance body, serial number, oh boy, it's there, ending nine nine seven one five for disposal.
Thank you, Mr. Epple. Questions or comments on, on that report? Counselor Goguen.
Thank you, Mayor Black. Just a quick question. We're taking this out, do they have a replacement vehicle there to kind of do what they need to do, or will that come future?
Ms. Bourne?
Thank you for the question, Counselor Goguen. So they will have a temporary vehicle in place. There'll be no interruption of service.
Last questions, comments, last chance? No? Okay. So there's a motion for two point seven. Counselor Finney?
I move that council direct item two point seven, surplus equipment, two thousand and one Ford E four fifty van with ambulance body be sent to the regular council meeting of May fourteenth, twenty twenty-four for consideration.
Moved by Counselor Finney, seconded by Deputy Mayor Martin. Call for the question? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Two point eight, Sackville Street Chalk Art Festival. Mr. Pride.
Thank you, worship. Members of council, the Street Chalk Art Festival is scheduled to take place on August twenty-third and twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-four, for the sixth time. Again, the festival include music, art workshops, professional chalk artists, kids activities, and various programs, and large three D art displays, and again, all presented on Bridge Street, provided it doesn't rain. To accommodate the festival, we're asking for a street closure of Bridge Street from Maine to Lorne Friday, August twenty-third, from one P M. until Sunday, August twenty-fifth at noon, and that, even though it's over on Saturday evening, that Sunday is when the, the staff go in and open the streets up. So just having that noon closure time gives them time to get it opened up. Normally, it's open well before then, though. And I'm hoping to take a motion to council in a couple of weeks. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Pride. Any questions from council on that report? Okay. So a motion two point eight. Somebody could read that one? Counselor Tower?
I move that council direct item two point eight, Sackville Street Chalk Art Festival be sent to the regular council meeting of May fourteenth, two thousand twenty-four for consideration.
Moved by Counselor Tower, seconded by Counselor Hicks. Call for the question? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Two point nine, DCS Daycare Agreement. Mr. Pride.
Thank you again. In twenty twenty-three, Tancharmar Council approved a one-year rental agreement with the DCS Kids Daycare in Dorchester to operate daycare at the Dorchester Recreation Center. That agreement ends at the end of June, twenty twenty-four. So overall, they've been in business for about two years, and it's been going really well there, and the DCS Daycare would like to renew their agreement, as outlined in the attachment here, for a three-year period. It's a very, very similar agreement to last year that was approved, other than the dates, obviously. They're looking to, they would be paying a monthly rental fee of seven hundred and fifty dollars, HST included, to the municipality. They need to have their own liability insurance and follow all provincial regulations, and the municipality would continue to provide snow clearing for the parking lot there. And that agreement would end at the end of June, twenty twenty-seven. So I hope to bring that to council in a couple of weeks.
Thank you, Mr. Pride. Any questions on item two point nine from council? Okay. So there's a motion for that item as well. Counselor Wiggins-Callwell, go ahead.
Black, I move that council direct item two point nine, DCS Daycare Agreement, to be sent to the regular council meeting of May fourteenth, twenty twenty-four for consideration.
Moved by Counselor Wiggins-Callwell, seconded by Counselor Tower. Call for the question? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Item two point ten, Quarry Park Update. Mr. Pride.
Thank you. Ask Mr. Beal if he could bring my map up here. Don't worry about it, it's not gonna work. It should just be. Grab her key. Technology. There we go. All right. All right. So as you can see from this very precise map, we have a bit of a plan for the quarry. So back in, during the capital budgeting process, council approved forty thousand dollars to start to develop the former Pickards Quarry property into municipal park and trail system. Since that time, we've been talking with the Tancharmar Outdoor Club, the Tancharmar Heritage Trust, Public Works, and Plan Three Sixty Trails Coordinator to discuss the project, and they are working on a more precise map than this, but this I threw together to give you an idea of what we'd be looking at. So the, the concept of the, the park would be a natural, kind of a natural trail surface, so single-track natural surface for a more natural nature experience. There would be an entrance here at the end of Quarry Lane. So that big yellow area represents the flood mitigation area that's there now, so it's not exactly as shown on, on Google Earth here. And there'd be an entrance down at the bottom here at, at Charlotte Street. So the Charlotte Street entrance would actually have a small parking area, a small cul-de-sac sort of parking area, that would fit about five or six cars, and it'd be accessible. We have an accessible trail following up from Charlotte Street to a little lookout. So there's a bit of a cliff face there that would overlook the water feature. And a little to the right, there's gonna be a small bridge that goes over a small waterfall that's there as well, that would also have a lookout. The trail itself is going to be a large loop, as you can see, with a couple of offshoots out into these little, little peninsula here, and a little area down here that's clear that could be used as a picnic area. Also, at the top of the map, we're hoping to have a lookouts area there as well, and that's in the site of the former building that was there when the, when the quarry was in operation. Some other pieces to the plan, there's some old, quite a bit of old fencing in there from when Mount Allison owned the property that needs to be removed. It's dangerous and crumbling. There's some old trees that need to be removed as well, and that are, sorry, that are leaning or fall, or have fallen. And the Tancharmar Heritage Trust is hoping to put some interpretive signage on the site as well, that would talk about the history of the quarry, as well as the, the current use as a flood, part of our flood mitigation process. We've been, we've reached out to ACOA and the Regional Development Corporation, sorry, I had to get the acronym in my head and think of the word, and about funding. So we're hoping to be able to get some additional funding so that we can move the project forward quickly. In the meantime, though, the, the forty thousand dollars that were approved is certainly enough to get a trail system in place. The Tancharmar Outdoor Club is planning on volunteering their time to do a lot of the trail work, similar to what they've done up in Walker Road with the hiking and cross-country ski trails there. And they were actually in the quarry this past weekend as part of Earth Day and pulled out fifteen bags of trash, four bags of refundables, an old armchair, and some sign, old signs, and all kinds of other goodies. So they did a really good job of cleaning up the, the site, and they're ready to, ready to go to start some work. So there's no ask right now. This is just an update for council's information, but I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Pride. Counselor Finney, I think, may have been first.
Mr. Pride, just a question. The fence that used to be around there was to keep people out. Now that we're taking the fence down, what are we going to do to protect the people from falling in? In some of the cases, over some of that embankments, they're quite steep, so.
Mr. Pride?
Yep, thank you for the question. No, you're right, there's definitely some steep areas there. Some of that can be remedied pretty easily by redirecting the trail. So there's old kind of goat paths that people have stomped down over the years, and some of that can be redirected, but areas that we want to have close to the edge, we're gonna use more of a natural wooden sort of fence, you know, kind of like what you'd have in an old cattle fence with the railings going across horizontally, and so it has more natural look to it, but would still serve the purpose of keeping people from tumbling.
Counselor Wiggins-Callwell.
Thank you, Mayor Black. I just wanted to know, Mr. Pride, what is the footing on the trails that are existing there now? Are they usable by bikes walking or strollers? I'm just curious to what the, the bases.
Mr. Pride?
Right now, the trails are very much just beaten down from people walking, so they're, they're not actual trails, they're just, have been naturally beaten down from people going through. You, you wouldn't take a trail or anything through there. The other thing that I did want to mention is that, that the Trails Coordinator with Plan Three Sixty has a lot of experience in developing trails, and he has talked about how, similar to downhill skiing, there's a kind of a system for ranking the difficulty of a trail, everything from double black diamond to blue, blue circle to green square. And he said that some areas of this park currently, because of steep spots on the, on the existing trails are, would be considered black diamond, they're difficult to traverse, but the goal is to have everything in there be more of a blue circle. So a lot of that can be easily accomplished by redirecting what's already there and covering up the existing trails, and that would make it more accessible to people, but the, the, other than the excess wheelchair accessible lookout, the, the park is not meant to be fully accessible to those who have mobility issues. It's meant to be for people who are looking for a nature experience that are able to walk in there.
Counselor Wiggins-Callwell, yep, yep.
Is that Mark Legere? Is he the, the planner? Yeah, excellent. Now, your forty thousand that you have for your money, so is that going to go in to the trail building itself, like you, to?
Mr. Pride?
Sure, thank you. A lot of that money will probably, would be going into developing the parking lot and the accessible trail, and then we'd be applying for grants for removing the bridge and the fencing, for the most part, yeah.
Counselor Tower.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to say, this is awesome. I've had a lot of people asking about it. I've been with one of the meetings, what they're trying to do, and this is a great update, even with this great map. It still lets people know what the future plan is, so this is well worth for the public, and I thank you for doing it today.
Any other questions or comments, information purposes only? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Pride. Two point eleven, Bylaw Number twenty twenty-four dash one three, a bylaw respecting the preservation of order within the municipality of Tancharmar. Ms. Beal.
Thank you, Mayor Black. So in the Clerk's ongoing updates of bylaws under amalgamation, we have been working on Bylaw Number two zero two four dash thirteen, a bylaw respecting the preservation of order within the municipality of Tancharmar. The Preservation of Order Bylaw is being redone to include all of Tancharmar. This bylaw provides the process of preserving order in Tancharmar public places and municipal property owned by Tancharmar, as well as schools, playgrounds, athletic fields, places of business, public walking trails, et cetera. This bylaw originated many, many years ago. It was updated in nineteen ninety-seven. It was updated in two thousand and seven, and two thousand and sixteen, and now is being updated to include Tancharmar. The majority of the wording in the existing bylaw now is the same wording that was in the nineteen ninety-seven bylaw. So it is staff's recommendation for council to give first and second reading to Bylaw Number two zero two four dash thirteen, a bylaw for the preservation of order at the regular council meeting of May fourteenth, two thousand twenty-four. And that's my report.
Thank you, Ms. Beal. Counselor Goguen, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor Black. I'm really torn about the wording on this one because it does, it does include a lot of issues that could be perceived within the town. One of them is we have a really active Rod and Gun Club that has a gun range off of Walker Road, and as the way that it currently stands is, they would have to tear down everything and then rebuild it. They're under, they, they follow the provincial guidelines, so I would maybe recommend it, go back to staff and get them to consult with the Rod and Gun Club and Department of National Resources to see what we can do for that type of thing. Also, another part says, no person shall hunt land in Tancharmar's limits, no hunting in area, as posted as a no hunting area by Tancharmar. My understanding is that the town could set a property as being a no hunting property and really limit people from hunting anywhere in the LSD, even, like anywhere in Tancharmar, even if it's one in, in the parts of the LSD. And another part kind of threw me off, it says that people can't use the school property, no person shall enter any school property unless authorized by law or invitation to be upon said property. So that kind of means that kids aren't allowed to use the parks at Marshview or Salem, or even sled on those properties. So I think before we go and just blanket approve it, I think maybe we should take a, a second look and more consideration on the wider area that we're taking into account.
Counselor Wiggins-Callwell, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor Black. I also agree with Counselor Goguen because our park and our school in Dorchester is used all summer long for kids in the area, so it's a little concerning that they're not gonna be able to do that.
Counselor Hicks?
Thank you, Mayor Black. I agree with Counselor Goguen and Counselor Wiggins-Callwell. We're taking in so much LSD area now that I think DNR should possibly be involved in this bylaws, see what the regulations are, and even our president of Rod and Gun Club. Now they have provincial, or federal wardens here, they can be involved in it, they can give the, some input in it to get it done right if we're gonna do it. That's my opinion on it.
Any other members of council? I, I agree. I think that it should, it should go. I, I agree, I think that it should, it should go back to staff, and maybe with a couple of options. We could look, potentially look and see what other, what some other municipalities are doing about this kind of bylaw. But again, like, taking in the, the former LSD areas, there's a concern there for sure, so we want to make sure we get it right, if it's going to be for our new municipality. So, sorry, Ms. Beal, go ahead, and then I'll.
So, thank you for your comments, counsel, through the mayor. And I just want to mention again that we did not create the wording in this bylaw now, this is the wording that has been there, which also includes the schools and the playgrounds. And not every bylaw that we bring forward just to make it a Tantramar bylaw is going to work without having some more research done to it. So my recommendation would be, if that's what I'm hearing, we would take it back, we would look at it, it will come to another committee of the whole when we feel comfortable with what we're presenting to council.
And do we, do we need, we don't need a mo, there was no motion anyway, so we just, staff just?
Exactly.
Okay, perfect. Thank you very much. Moving on to two point one two, repeal of Bylaw Number 197 and 197A, a bylaw relating to the operation of retail business in the town of Sackville. Ms. Goodwin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. The report can be found on page thirty-three of the council package. The former town of Sackville established Bylaw 197 in two thousand and five, noting that retail businesses are permitted to operate on a weekly day of rest, as defined in the Act, between the hours of twelve PM and six PM. In two thousand and seven, the Bylaw 197A was approved, changing those hours to ten AM to six PM. On March twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-four, the municipality received a letter from the Retail Council of Canada requesting that the municipality of Tantramar amend Bylaw 197 and 197A, and allow retailers to determine Sunday opening hours that work best for their business. Retail is the largest private sector employer in New Brunswick and in Canada. Due to constantly changing lifestyles and work hours, retail has also been forced to change in response to customer demand for more flexibility in retail hours of operation. Currently, in New Brunswick, Tantramar and Merrimashie are the only governments with a notable retail presence that still limit the ability of a retailer to choose the Sunday opening hours that work best for their business. The Days of Rest Act in New Brunswick outlines the requirements for prescribed days of rest and weekly days of rest. Therefore, it's staff recommendation that council consider the repeal of Bylaw Number 197 and 197A, which would permit retailers to choose their Sunday operating hours in accordance with the Days of Rest Act. That's my report, Mr. Mayor, and happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Goodwin. Any questions or comments from council for this bylaw? Counselor Gogan?
Thank you, Mayor Black. I see that the recommendation, or the letter was from the Retail Council of Canada. Did we get any requests from the local businesses? Because, like, I don't know, you go downtown at ten o'clock in the morning, and it's usually not that busy, so I'm just trying to figure out if it's coming from them, or just coming as a blanket statement that they sent it all to the municipalities.
Ms. Goodwin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for your question, Counselor Gogan. We, the Clerk's office, has not heard anything from the retail business. By repealing this bylaw, it would allow them to decide when they wanted to open. Currently, they can only open within the hours of ten AM and six PM. Some businesses, that may work for them, others it may not. So this would allow them, as long as they're following the Days of Rest Act, this would allow them to decide what their opening hours are.
Any other questions or comments? Okay. All right. Thank you, Ms. Goodwin. Moving on to department reports, three point one, Active Living and Culture. Mr. Pride?
Thank you, Worship, members of council. You can find the report on pages thirty-seven and thirty-eight of your package. Staff has spoken with DTI concerning the Pedway project. The province provided the former town of Sackville with clear parameters a couple of years ago to move forward with the project. One of the parameters includes the municipality funding, all funding to build the structure, and taking on all liability and maintenance of the Pedway once it's built. The province is not prepared to provide any funding to the project. Staff also determined that applying for a license of occupation to take on the maintenance of the rail trail within municipal boundaries from the province would be better reviewed as part of the municipal strategic planning process, so we're going to wait on that. The summer student positions have been filled, and our summer programs coordinator actually started today. Sophie Esther Brooks is back for a second summer as the coordinator. Staff, again, have been working with the, with the various folks about the quarry park, as you know. The interior of the Civic Center has been cleaned up considerably, and we've done a lot of painting in there, and it's, it's looking pretty good. Down at Programs, municipal spring programs are underway, you can see the list there, and the public can find about any of our programs at tantramarenv.com backslash programs. April's Poetry Month, so there's been a lot of activities going on around Poetry Month. And on April thirtieth at six PM, we'll be hosting an open mic poetry night here at Council Chambers, where the winners of the poetry contest will be announced, and residents and council and staff would have the opportunity to read their favorite poem. We hosted our Earth Day cleanup today, actually, so there was quite a few people, groups and staff and council members out taking part. The Border Town Art Fair will take place May fourth and fifth at the Civic Center. It was formerly known as the Sackville Art Fair and has been combined with the Border Town Festival, and will include workshops, theater, the art fair itself, and, and more, and you can find the schedule online. And submissions are being accepted for the annual volunteer recognition night. You can find those online as well. And the New Brunswick Sports Hall of Fame induction ceremony, again, is set to take place on June first, and you can see in the package that we have a few events leading up to that, that big induction ceremony to try to get people, information out to residents. I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Pride. Any questions on the Active Living and Culture report? Just one quick question. I noticed you have the Sackville Fall Fair will take place September nineteenth to the twenty-second. Have you looked far ahead to see if the weather is going to be good for that weekend yet?
The, the weather's always good for Fall Fair.
Oh, sorry, Counselor Wiggins-Collville, I apologize.
No, thank you, Mayor Black. Just a shout out to yesterday in Dorchester, the Greater Dorchester moving forward, went around and, and picked up truckloads of, of garbage, so that was nice to see. It's really improved the, the local area, so just wanted to give a shout out to them. Thank you.
All right, moving on to three point two, Community and Corporate Services. Ms. Miller?
Good afternoon. The report for Community and Corporate Services covers the period between March sixteenth to April fifteenth, and the report in full is available in your council package on page thirty-nine, and I'll provide a few highlights here. Decoals with the new Tantramar brand have been delivered, and residents will start to see them around Tantramar on our fleet in the coming weeks. We also have new signage for municipal buildings underway, as well as new banners. The Tantramar Visitor Information Center and Craft Gallery will open to the public on May first, as well as our new tenant Cafe Tentamar, who's also planning to open then. The 2024 Visitor and Events Guide is now available online and print. Community and Corporate Services staff and several members of council attended the Saltscapes Expo in Halifax this past weekend, and I heard a good time was had by all. A new survey titled Planning for Tantramar Tourism and Business Development Programs in 2024 is available on our website. Survey results will help us plan programs and activities for 2024, and the deadline to submit a response is May third. An important communication was recently shared with residents. Copies of your guide to the new municipality of Tantramar will mail out. This guide contains important information on the Tantramar Council, municipal departments, waste collection, programs and services, and staff have received really positive feedback on the guide from residents, which has been great to hear. That is my report, I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. Any questions on, on that report? Since we're doing shout-outs, I will send a shout-out to Mr. Kelly Spurles and Mr. McLaughlin about the Saltscapes, it was fantastic weekend. I particularly want to note Deputy Mayor Martin's ability at corralling people from the floor, to offer them ginger cookies, and selling our community like nobody I've ever seen, so, well done, Mr. Martin, that was fantastic. All right, moving on to three point three, Engineering and Public Works. Mr. Epple?
Thank you, Worship. The report can be found on page forty. Just some quick highlights. We, there's nothing really big in this one. We did some shoulder repairs after some heavy rainfall events, assembled some furniture for the Visitor Information Center, and set up shelving for the craft gallery that's contained in there. The shelving had to be removed in order for us to clean the carpets over the winter. We started replacing some of the missing and damaged street signs, and we mulched some of the brush and small trees that are along the gravel section of the Walker Road, and we've started filling in potholes. CN sent us a notification that they are planning to conduct their annual vegetation management program from May to October twenty twenty-four, and this involves the application of herbicides. If residents want to find out more information, they can go to www.nc.ca/vegetation, or they can email contact@cn.ca, or they can call one eight 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 five nine zero nine. Seems like an awful lot of eights in a phone number. During the past four weeks, we replaced four water meters, and we had to replace the sewer lift pump with a backup pump at the Brooks Avenue Lift Station. We've also replaced some, reinstalled the second lift pump at the Dorchester Lift Station so that it's fully operational and has backup. The mechanics are working on preparing the lawn mowing equipment and removing the ice and snow control equipment. We haven't quite removed it all, just in case. We just never know. Happy to say that, well, I guess this is a, you know, predicts what's going to happen. The new sidewalk plow has arrived, just in time for the end of winter, and the new loader that was approved at the last meeting has been put on order, and we're expecting to receive that probably the end of June. Retention Pond Three is nearing completion. The jacking and boring of pipes, three pipes under CN was completed over the last two weeks, and Beal and Inch is now working on addressing some of the deficiencies and a little bit of the seasonal work that was not quite finished. Abatto AB zero one, the pipes are installed, the gates will be installed soon, expecting one of the gates will be installed tomorrow, and they are re-establishing the dike. Phase one is complete, they are proceeding with phase two, and we're expecting that they will be a hundred percent complete early May. We understand that the province has secured funding, but we don't know what the details are, and that for phase two invoicing will go directly to the province from the contractor. The good news is, is going to get completed. Dorchester Lift Station, which was awarded, that is largely work happening off-site with shop drawings and approvals, and temporary power should be shifted over to a new pole location soon. The asphalt patching tender we talked about earlier, hoping to see that approved at the next council meeting, and we are working on a tender for station road to do some paving and storm sewer work there in Dorchester. That's the end of my report, your worship. If there's any question, I'd be happy to try and answer them.
Thank you, Mr. Epple. Any questions for Engineering and Public Works? Okay. Thank you again. Three point four, Protective Services starts on page forty-one, includes the Bylaw Enforcement Report and the Animal Control Report from both Dorchester and Sackville. And then I think next in the report is Sackville Fire, so Chief Bowser.
Thank you, Mayor Black, members of council. Sackville Fire responded to eighteen calls for service, which included five commercial fire alarms, three motor vehicle collisions, three requests for assistance from ambulance in New Brunswick, three grass fires, one residential fire alarm, one smell of smoke, one request for assistance from RCMP, and one mutual aid request from Pointe Bute Fire Department. Training sessions that took place were patient care, extrication tools, auto extrication tabletop scenarios, as well as our annual regular station and equipment checks, and members also hosted the Sackville Brownies here at our station for a tour and a fire safety presentation. I would also like to remind our residents, when planning for outside fires, when hoping the weather is going to be favorable, to reference the www.sackville.com under Bylaw Number 275 for the former residents of the municipality of Sackville. Also, I would encourage all residents to please assure that they have a civic number visible from the roadside, which will enhance the response times for all emergency services in the event that we need to respond to their location. And as always, a reminder for a seventy-two hour preparedness kit in the event of an emergency, and I'd be happy to answer any questions coming out of my report.
Thank you, Chief Bowser. Any questions for the Sackville Fire Report? I do have a quick one, since you brought up the visibility for the numbers. Is it, can you talk about how residents would be able to, do we still offer the blue numbers, the blue shiny numbers here at Town Hall?
Yes, we do. The, the blue nine-one-one plates are still available here at Town Hall, and if somebody's not familiar with how to place those numbers on a residence or a property, they can reference Bylaw Number 147.
Okay. Thank you very much. Also included is the Dorchester Fire Report and the Pointe Bute Fire, Fire Report as well, and then after that is RCMP. Sergeant Hanson?
Thank you. For us, here, the past month has been sort of average, if you will, in terms of calls for service and the types of calls that we responded to. Not mentioned in the report, but I just thought about it. We were quite busy on the highway for a little while with protests going on at the border, of course. That tied up a lot of resources, even from the outside and all over the province came to assist with that, as there was a large number of vehicles on, on the side of the highway. We, of course, had a murder in Sackville, which was awful. Some positive things lately, the Coffee for a Cop, April fifth, at the Tim Hortons, is wonderful. It was nice to see you, Mayor Black, and Counselor Tower. Members of the public that came and asked questions and sat with us and met with us, it was a fantastic experience, very well received. Actually putting another one forward in memorandum cook in May, very much looking forward to that. Traffic stats are up, which is always happy for me and happy for you, I believe. The nice weather's coming, and we should see the men and women out there more often. Bicycles are all tuned up and ready to go, and we'll be starting bicycle patrols soon, so lots more good things to come.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Questions or comments to the RCMP report? Counselor Gogan?
Thank you, Mayor Black. Just a, a quick apology for not attending the, the meeting the other night that we had, that you guys had. Now, I just wanted to say that the, from what I'm hearing, the comments about the coffee with the cop was fantastic.
Thank you.
And it's nice to see the members out in public and actually being shown out there, and so I think that helps with restore confidence within the municipality.
Thank you very much.
Deputy Mayor Martin? Go ahead.
Just a, a couple of questions. I noticed that the, some of the protesters are still set up at the border coming in from Nova Scotia. Do you know any status on whether they're going to stay for the summer?
Good question. One of the, the primary organizer has said that he plans on being there as long as it takes until the tax goes away. No comment. Could be a little while. They've been very good about being cooperative with us and saying, we have designated safe areas for you to lawfully protest, but our primary concern is public safety, we can't have people on the highway, we can't have people at risk. So that, those conversations are going very well, but there's a core group of people that are very dedicated to what they believe, and they may be there for quite some time.
I guess, they, yeah, I, I travel to Amherst probably half a dozen, half a dozen times a week, and I find them very courteous and staying off the road. I just was wondering if we were going to see trailers and flags and stuff for the summer, but it is what it is, I guess. The only other question I had for you, is there somebody that's looking at? is there somebody that's looking at coming out into the rural areas and saying, having a little, like, a town hall type meeting in the rural areas with the folks out in the country that can't necessarily get into town, that might wanna, if somebody could.
Uh, Ms. Born.
Through the mayor. Thank you for the question, Deputy Mayor Martin. Uh, so what we'll actually plan to do under our twenty twenty-four priority action plan is we'll have info sessions within each of the wards, and I'll work with Sergeant Hanson to plan some stops with the, uh, local RCMP as well.
I got my answer. Thank you very much. All right. Great, y'all. Well, that's all I had. Thanks, Mayor.
All right. Any last questions on that report? Councilor Tower.
Thank you. It's not a question, it's a comment of thank you for doing the coffee with cops, because it was a great time, and, uh, I had people talk to me later about it. So it made a good impact, and it was nice to see. A lot of happiness in that place, knowing that the RCMP are that close, and they're still happy is a good sign. So.
Appreciate the feedback. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Uh, moving on to three point five, financial services. Mr. Beal.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, the report begins on page forty-four. Uh, financial statements are included to the end of March twenty twenty-four. Uh, previous package had reports up to March fifteenth. Uh, moving forward, the reports will include the financial data up to the end of the prior fiscal month in order to align with accounting system, uh, reporting periods. So, uh, with closing middle of the month, it just made it difficult to, it difficult to do comparisons in the future as we, as we, as we move on from year to year. The utility budget still does, uh, does not see much revenue in the first quarter, of course, as the first quarterly water bills for January and March twenty twenty-four, uh, go out in April. So they have actually just went out, uh, last week, so, uh, people have seen their, got their first quarterly water bills for twenty twenty-four, and that revenue will show up in the April reporting period. Twenty twenty-three accounts continue to get closed and balanced. Gas tax funds transfers are made, uh, to pay for twenty twenty-three gas tax projects. Um, the projects that were done in twenty twenty-three were no, are noted in the report, and I will not repeat those. Um, with regards to gas tax funding, also, there remains a total of two hundred and fourteen thousand, three hundred and eighty dollars from the twenty nineteen to twenty twenty-three gas tax program to be spent in twenty twenty-four. Uh, this will be spent on station road in Dorchester and on the outdoor ring project in Dorchester. Um, the outdoor ring project has been completed and already paid for in twenty twenty-four, so that, that project is closed. So the only gas tax project remaining is station road. Um, during late March, or, uh, uh, sorry, during late March, early April, we received deposits from provincial government for the Abatto project and many other projects. The Abatto was very large, uh, uh, deposits that we were waiting for in the range of two point four million dollars, um, to, to get our bank accounts back, uh, back to where they needed to be and to pay the contractor for, uh, for phase one of that. Um, this, with, uh, all the funds that they've received, uh, in late March, early April clears up a large majority of our accounts receivable, and is, uh, now has our operating accounts well into the positive balances. Uh, we've also been working towards hiring bylaw students over the summer, uh, for the summer months, uh, and we'll look to report on this at the next council meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Beal. Any questions on the financial services report? Deputy Mayor Martin.
Uh, I'm not sure who this question's for. It's due with the bylaw officers. Um, my question is, um, is there any, uh, plan to have bylaw officers go out into the rural areas of, uh, Tantramar? Especially when it comes to, uh, checking some properties that maybe should be looked at that for, uh, for being improperly taken care of?
Mr. Beal.
That's one question.
Yeah, I can answer that. So the bylaw officer has been directed to go, uh, to, uh, spend time outside of, of course, former town of Sackville boundaries, uh, in Dorchester, in the, in the local service districts as well. I think Counselor Hicks can, can probably attest that they have been down that way. They have been seen down there with questions as to why they're going down that way. So, um, they also have been instructed to head towards, uh, towards the Allak area as well and whatnot. So, um, as we have bylaw students, we'll have more enforcement during the summer, um, so there will be more visibility. And, uh, we are, are currently working on a, a number of dangerous unsightly files, uh, that we'll continue to work on through, through the summer months.
Did you have a follow up there?
Just one more follow up.
Go ahead.
Um, I'm not sure who to direct this one at. I, maybe the, our engineer. It's to do, can you tell me, or somebody can tell me, is the High Marsh Road provincial highway?
Not sure who to. Ms. Beal, did you want to take a crack at that?
Thank you for the question, and I could be wrong, but I think the municipality takes care of, uh, the road until the covered bridge. And after that, DTI, uh, takes care of the road.
Uh, just a, a comment. Uh, the reason why I bring it up, I had several people at, uh, an event we had at our church yesterday mentioned that they came across the High Marsh Road, and right now it's almost impassable. And they were concerned, and I said I would check and see if I could find out where the point of finger at.
Thank you.
Mr. Apple.
Just a slight clarification, your worship. Our property actually, uh, responsibility for High Marsh Road goes a couple hundred meters beyond the covered bridge, but we have a maintenance agreement with DTI Transportation where they look after the portion from the covered bridge to the extent of the former town limit.
Thank you. All right. Uh, moving on to three point six administration, three point six point one legislative services. Ms. Beal.
Thank you. Through the mayor. The clerk's office continues the extensive review of bylaws and policies. And, uh, as mentioned, every month, all of our bylaws can be found on the municipality's website. The clerk's office continues to review information from AMA&amp;B as it relates to administrative, uh, administration in Tantramar and through New Brunswick. UMMB bulletins are forwarded to all members of council and administration on a weekly basis. The clerk's office opened one tender and one RFP during the month. The clerk's office is looking to provide record management training to management and administration staff in the near future. The clerk's office attended a court hearing in Moncton on March twenty-eighth. Uh, within the report, you can see the next two meetings that are scheduled, our regular council meeting Tuesday, May fourteenth, seven P M, and our committee of the whole meeting Monday, May twenty-seventh, three P M. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Beal. Any questions on the legislative services, uh, report? Okay. Thank you again. Uh, three point six point two, chief administrative officer, Ms. Born.
Thank you, your worship, and members of council. My report can be found on page fifty-one of your agenda package. The reporting period, as indicated, is March fifteenth to April fifteenth. Um, as presented at the last committee of the whole meeting, I have the three pillars lined up there as well, just as a refresher for our public as well as council. Um, there's a link that's included in the report as well that links it to the, the action plan on our website. And we'll be working those into our council decision requests as well going forward of the strategic relevance relating it back to all of our, all of our decisions relating it back to our priority action. Uh, moving on to, uh, Regional Service Commission, Plan Three sixty, two permits were issued, uh, in the last month with a total of a little over nine thousand dollars. And quarterly reports, uh, once they're received, will be shared by, uh, finance in their monthly report. We did not have a monthly administrators meeting this month, and the next one is scheduled for May fourteenth. Um, as mentioned, uh, Tantramar is co-hosting a Rural Communities Success Stories. Um, that will be hosted here at, uh, the municipal office on May tenth. Uh, I'll be a presenter for that, as well as Melanie, our CPO, will be attending that as well. Um, I attended a non-urban communities forum on April tenth. Uh, this was a, a forum hosted by the Regional Service Commission of our non-urban communities, uh, specifically addressing any challenges that we're having post-reform. Um, I can say, you know, speaking in general terms, it does not appear that, uh, reform in some areas, they, we still very much lack resources. Uh, Tantramar overall is actually doing quite well, um, but there's more rural areas that are, are having specific challenges with finance, uh, recruitment and retention of water operators, uh, and even engineering. They're having to outsource, and it's, it's becoming quite costly. Uh, so coming out of that, there'll be, uh, sessions that'll be set up, uh, specifically for water operation, operation or, uh, engineering or finance, and we'll attend as needed. Our upcoming meeting for Tantramar Fire Service Chiefs and Deputy Chiefs will be held, uh, this coming Wednesday as we, uh, as we continue to work towards progress and enhancement of our Tantramar Fire Service under our priority action plan. Uh, myself and three members of the management team attended an employment seminar in Fredericton on March twenty-seventh. This was sponsored by environment and local government and hosted by our association. Uh, managers continue to participate in our association's partnership training that's offered through the University of Moncton uh, for the municipal management training certification. Uh, ongoing training is added to our schedule, provided, uh, budget, available budget, uh, and as well looking at training opportunities for our entire team. Uh, under UMMB, uh, myself and the mayor attended the, the very first advocacy days in Fredericton on March twentieth to twenty-first. This was a gathering of MLA's ministers and party leaders, and the theme was growing together, stronger communities for a strong province. Uh, all party leaders were in attendance for this session, and it provided a great opportunity for question and answer period and a unified voice from our UMMB member municipalities. Overall, great sessions, and it is evident how far municipalities have come post-reform and a great opportunity to discuss challenges and work towards solutions collaboratively. And, uh, that's my report, and I would welcome any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Born. Any questions for the CAO report? Okay. All right. Uh, moving on to three point six point three, mayor's report, uh, can be found on page fifty-three. Well, I was going to mention the advocacy days and coffee with the cop, but both of those things have been mentioned. Uh, I will say, I guess, just, just to point something out, from Friday, April twelfth to Sunday, April fourteenth, uh, the board of the Southeast Regional Service Commission met for a weekend of working sessions. And so the focus of that was to look at where the mandated services are, uh, now, so currently, from twenty twenty-four, leading, the beginning of twenty twenty-four leading up to now, and, uh, and where we would like as a board to see those mandated services go. And then also to, to do a quick review of the strategic plan that the Southeast Regional Service Commission put into place. The strategic plan was only for one year, I think twenty twenty-three, um, covering twenty twenty-three, twenty-four, so almost two years. And then there'll be a full review before we put another strategic plan forward, which will have a longer timeframe. But it's just to make sure that we're in line with municipalities that represent, uh, the southeast region, uh, around the table. So it was a good sessions. Um, we'll see where the Regional Service Commission goes in the future, but, uh, but there was good conversation and good, good discussion. My report, the rest of my report is in the package. I, I'd take any questions if anybody has any. Councilor Tower.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, you've talked about the Isthmus in this. Is there any updates that the public can get on where the dykes and the Isthmus project is going?
Uh, at this point, no. There is not really, um, anything. I, I, I have heard from, um, a gentleman named Lyle Skinner, who is the, um, he's a representative for Senator Jim Quinn from New Brunswick. Senator Jim Quinn put forward a, uh, a senate bill for jurisdictional responsibility of the dike lands to be returned to the federal government. I think it was last, oh my, I don't, the time for it, time isn't for me is, is weird, but I think it was last year I went to Ottawa for the senate hearing. Um, that bill has now gone through the process. It is going to be hitting the full senate floor for transportation and committee, uh, review. And so that, that's really all I, the, the details I have for the Shiknek to Isthmus at this point. So there's still some work being done from the jurisdictional perspective. Um, currently, it's New Brunswick, Nova Scotia that have the jurisdictional responsibility on that. But as far as the work, uh, that's ongoing with the Isthmus, I don't have anything to report at this time. You can do what I want, so thank you. Any, any other questions? No? Okay. Uh, item four, question period, a fifteen-minute public question period for clarification purposes of information presented to council during the committee of the whole meeting.
Yes, Bruce Work, WorkTimes.com. I have, uh, short questions for clarification on three areas. The first is the CAO's report on the Tantramar Fire Service. You reported that the upcoming meeting for the chiefs and district chiefs is scheduled for later this month. And you're working toward continued progress and enhancement of Tantramar Fire Service as per the twenty twenty-four priority action plan. I'm just wondering if there's more detail on that, what that enhancement would involve.
Ms. Born.
Thank you for the question, Mr. Work. Um, as mentioned in my report, there is a link to the priority action plan. So the priority action plan has a table that lists the priority, um, what pillar it's associated with and the action. So within the action, uh, for that specific one, it does, does note standardized governance, purchasing and established collaborative approach to training.
Yeah, as a follow-up to that, is there, um, I know that as part of municipal reform, uh, I think, looking down the road, there is a plan to integrate fire services and police services in the new municipalities. I'm wondering where that stands. Is there, um, it, would all three departments, separate departments, be brought together as one in the future, and if so, when might that happen?
Thank you for the question, Mr. Work. You're correct. Uh, under the white paper, there was no consideration, uh, nothing to act on as far as fire service. Uh, we can say that as we work through, uh, post-reform, we're trying to enhance services, much like in the fire service, boost efficiencies across the organization, uh, you know, to try to, uh, really save tax dollars. Uh, so in working with the fire service, we still have three very separate halls. Uh, they still have their own, they maintain their own identity, uh, you know, Sackville Fire and Rescue, Pointe Bute Fire and Rescue, and Dorchester Fire and Rescue. Uh, but they would be, they would be grouped as Tantramar Fire Service. So we have one fire service, but we have three separate halls. Uh, and there would be no, no plans at the current time to, uh, move forward with any amalgamation of, of the fire, uh, of the halls, much like other municipalities have chosen to do.
Thank you very much. My next question has to do with the Quarry Park Project. I, I understand the forty thousand dollars from the capital budget, uh, and the need for more money to complete the project. I'm just not clear on if there's an estimate on how much would be required over and above the forty thousand dollars to complete the Quarry Park Project.
Mr. Pry.
Oh, thanks for the question again. Um, our manager of parks and recreation facilities is working on quotes now, so we don't have the final pricing, but, uh, we were kind of working on guestimates based on our experience with similar projects.
So no number, no number yet.
Oh, okay. Oh, okay, thank you. And with the forty thousand dollar, initial forty thousand dollars, what, uh, can we expect to see, uh, by the end of, say, this, uh, twenty twenty-four?
Mr. Pry.
Oh, thank you. Uh, some of that will depend on how those pricing, prices come back. But, uh, what we're hoping to do is at the very least, complete the, uh, parking lot from Charlotte Street and the wheelchair accessible trail to the lookout. And then, uh, the Tantramar Outdoor Club is committed to, um, working on the trails themselves. So all the trails themselves should be completed at very low cost. Uh, and then after that, it really depends on whether or not we're able to install the bridge this year or, uh, get the fencing out of there, but, uh, those would be the next two priorities.
Thank you very much. And finally, just a, a technical question, a couple of small ones on the Abatto. I'm wondering, uh, first of all, just a technical question, there are two pipes there, uh, twelve hundred and nine hundred diameter. I'm wondering, are those separate pipes that feed each of the gates?
Mr. Apple.
Thank you, your worship. The two pipes are completely separate from one another. However, they work in conjunction, so, uh, the twelve hundred pipe is, uh, independent of the nine hundred, has its own gate, as does, as will the nine hundred. Uh, the purpose of having the two pipes is that routine flow will go through the twelve hundred, which is at a lower elevation, sorry, lower elevation during During high precipitation events and runoff, we would expect that then we would see water discharge from the 900, which is at a higher elevation as well. So it's a bit of an overflow.
And my other question is, Phase 1 is completed. What is Phase 2? What does that involve?
Phase 1 and Phase 2 are, so we tendered it one project, and in order to meet the financial constraints of $2.4 million for Phase 1, sorry, for, for the project, we had to split up the project into a Phase 1, which was doing most of the work, and Phase 2 was to finish it. So there were, I think, it was really for financial reasons that that was done. The work that's remaining, as it stands today, is to reestablish the dike, install the gates on the two pipes, dig and armor the channel out to the river, and then to make the connection on the upstream end to connect the drainage ditch that was built as a, as part of the Lawrence Street pipe to connect that actually to where the Abito is.
Thank you.
Hi there, Erica Butler with CHMA. Was wondering about the, the combining or the, using the 35 Main Street driveway to access the parking lot at Town Hall. Will that mean more parking spaces in front of Town Hall for citizens? Kind of looks like it.
Did you want to handle that one?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the question, Ms. Butler. No, the number of parking spaces would, oh, it would increase by three.
Great. Great. Regarding the preservation of order bylaw, I was wondering if there, is that something where there's a number of violations on the books for that? Is that, do you, do you get many violations under that bylaw? Or I guess it's the town of Sackville bylaw, so I'm talking about the previous one that this one would have been based on.
Ms. Beal.
Thank you for the question through the mayor. I think our Director of Finances could answer that better as bylaw falls under his portfolio, so I will turn it over to him.
Mr. Beal.
Yeah, thank you. So the bylaw, bylaw does get enforced from time to time. It is not a regularly enforced bylaw, but during, during my time since we've had the bylaw enforcement in 2003 and on, I can, I can certify that it has been needed to be used a few times. Depending on, depending on it, I'd have to go back and do research to determine exactly when the time was and what it was used for. But it has, those, the clauses within the bylaw have been used from time to time.
Okay. Regarding the, the information from DTI about the Pedway, I guess I'm curious as to, is there a next step now that Tantramar takes with regard to that subject area, I guess I'll call it?
Mr. Pry.
I guess that would be up to council. I mean, we're talking about a multimillion-dollar project that we would be 100% on the hook for. So that's where I'll leave it for now.
So in other words, it would, it would need to be something kickstarted by a member of council?
Yep. Yeah. I mean, it would, it would have to be something kickstarted by council. And I mean, it's obviously currently not on the budget for 2024, so it would have to be something that might be looked at in a budget priority planning session or whatever that might look like.
All right. Okay, thanks.
All right. Number five on the agenda, adjournment. Moved by Councillor Tower, seconded by Councillor Finney. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, everyone.